Okay. Mike, have a good night everyone. We're gonna get started, try to keep this on schedule as best as we can, but still have a very lively discussion as we hear from the candidates for the city council seat that is being vacated by Councilman Curran, who is here this evening. Thank you.
Oh, and hey, Regal.
Yes, I appreciate that. So, my first time moderating forum. That may become apparent as the night goes on, so please forgive me. But I've tried to lay things out on the sheet that was on the back table to lay out the schedule and how things will be structured. We'll have two rounds of questions. The first round will be questions that are found on the back of the schedules, and these are questions that came in in the lead up to the forum and from members of the board. And then, while we're having the first round of conversation, please, on the index cards, write any questions that you may have and pass them to Dana, Vice President of ONA, who's sitting here in the front, till collate those. And then during the second round, we'll ask a representative sample of those questions to the candidates. When we begin, we'll start in alphabetical order, and then sort of drop that first person to the end and go through each round of questions, so you all have a chance to be first. But I'll allow each candidate to make a two-minute opening remarks. And then, when they're finished, we will ask the questions in order. You'll each have a minute to respond. If you pay attention to Jeff, our safety chair, she has two colored cards. The yellow is a 45-second warning, and the pink, because I didn't have any red paper at home, will be timed up. And it's not the Gong Show, we don't have the hook, but it would be appreciated if at the minute that you close your remarks and we move on. At the end of the round two questioning, we'll give the candidates again an opportunity to make their closing statements, two minutes for that. And then, I'll wrap things up, and we'll be free to chat and if folks want to approach the candidates, if candidates want to approach the folks, have at it, just keep it clean, no blood, because we need to be invited back here. So, wonderful. So, going in order, starting with Marcus Dent, if you would give your opening remarks, sir?
Great, thanks for having me. I'm Marcus Dent, City Council 3rd District Candidate. Born and raised right here in Northeast Baltimore. I was raised where I fly, raised where my parents go to, where they did. I went to United States Air Force and served six years as a captain. Upon getting out of the Air Force, I really committed myself back to Baltimore City, back to the residents of Northeast Baltimore. I started a group called the Dent Group, delivering education needs together, trained, certified, employed with 450 Baltimore City residents in my skill set IT. From there, I also worked as a legislative aide for Keith Mitchell down in the Rapids. So I learned how the legislative process works, learned how to take a residence issue and enact that into law. So I got excellent tutors in that field. From there, I went on to go ahead and start another program with five-star enterprises, where we went into the school system. And the school system provided those wraparound services and other school programs for our youth. A lot of times junior candidates give you open promises and things they dreamt up, things they'd like to do, but they've never actually done. Case in point, when we wanted to raise minimum wage back in 2012, I helped Keith Mitchell to get that done. Now, we want to get it to $15, but that is a legislative issue. As a councilman, I can advocate and I can work with our legislators, but again, I want to make sure that you understand what your roles and responsibilities are as a councilman. We'll have city council meetings, we'll have offices down at City Hall, but we need to have an office in the district. I'm proud to say that I did open my office in the district today. It's right on Off-Road and Northern Parkway, right in the Best of United, one of the basement levels. We got a beautiful space. Come in and voice your prayers right now. I'm not gonna wait until I take office to serve you. I'm gonna service you right now and make sure that you can have confidence in me and I'll be responsive to your needs. Again, Marcus Dent, 3rd District City Council Candidate. Thank you for having us for the evening.
Thank you very much. Ryan Dorsey.
Hello, I am Ryan Dorsey. I am a Mayfield resident. I have lived in this district my entire life. I'm the only candidate here who grew up in this district and lives here my entire life. I'm the only candidate here who is a graduate of a Baltimore City Public High School. And it's news to me that I'm not the only candidate who said I would have an office in the district. I am the only candidate, as far as I know, that said I would be a full-time councilperson and had no other job. Because that's what I believe is necessary to be able to address the needs of our district, but also be available to address the most deeply rooted issues that we face as a city: systemic inequalities and institutional racism at the root of all the problems that we face. I came into this race because my simple experience as a citizen, as a resident of this city, I have seen that the people who are part of the political establishment that we have and have been running Baltimore City for basically my entire lifetime have kind of gone about things the same way, the same way, the same way. My campaign's always been about saying that the problems that we hear about most often, the kind of problems that drive people out of Baltimore, the kind of middle-class residents who have a inferior district, the kind of people who focus on education and public safety and public health. And I look at those three issues as symptoms of deeper problems around housing and employment and transportation, the basics of what it means to be a city. And we lack affordable housing in areas of opportunity, living wage, jobs, and equitable transit system in a city where 35% of households don't own cars. My campaign is about understanding that those problems are the making of allowing racism to drive policy in Baltimore City for our entire district. I have worked to dismantle the racist and divisive policies that have brought this city to what it is today and replace them with ones that truly build racial equity for citizens across this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jermaine Jones?
Thank you for having me. My name is Jermaine Jones. I run for city council here in the 3rd District. Just a little bit about myself. I also grew up in Northeast Baltimore. I currently live in Hamilton. Spent my adult life as a community organizer fighting for our neighborhoods. Unlike a lot of my friends and family, I had the opportunity to go away to college, Syracuse University, where I graduated as a political science major. Coming back home, being away and coming back helped me, helped to open my eyes up to a lot of the issues I became numb to growing up in the city, such as the abandoned houses, such as the lack of opportunities in the trash in our streets. And at that point, I decided, you know what? I want to do something to get back to my neighborhood. And that's why I began volunteering as a community organizer, where I fought to bring resources for neighborhoods, where I fought, you know, to make sure that big-box stores like Walmart doesn't come in and develop in our neighborhood without giving back to the community and hold developers accountable. Where I also led the fight to make sure we passed legislation to hire local residents on city contracts. While doing that work, I gained the respect and admiration of my members, and I became, and I'm now the elected leader for my labor unit, where I represented a thousand men and women in construction, making sure they received healthcare, a living wage, and a pension, a real progressive fight that we faced with this country today. But the reason I run for city council is because it's how we put our neighborhoods first. You know, there's a lot of investments and emphasis put downtown in Felt Point and Harbor, but as you all know, Baltimore's always been known as a city of neighborhoods and always will be. And we need to live, and we need to put our neighborhoods first so make sure that we live in neighborhoods that are safe, secure, and that have resources and opportunity. So I'm asking you to vote for me on April 26th, for election day, because I care about our neighborhoods. I have family that live here, I have friends that live here. And we need to make sure we have a qualified candidate with a track record that on day one can give this district the representation it deserves. And by the end of today, you'll realize that candidate is me. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Jones?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alicia Jones, and I am a proud candidate for the 3rd District City Council race. My start in the 3rd District began right here at Morgan State University, where I started as an undergraduate. I also served as the Student Government Association President at Morgan, where my love for not only this community, but its people flourished. I then became a homeowner at the age of 26, right down the street in the Parammont Community, where I now serve as the Parammont Community Association President. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, and I hope that you will be able to understand my love not only for this district, but the city and its people. So thank you for allowing me to articulate my vision to you and to be informed, involved, and empowered. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the historic, original Northwood Community Association. I am very, very happy to be here tonight because I am a public servant. I am a public servant that is a father of three. And I heard some very tremendous boasts before I stood up, but I'll tell you this. I have raised three sons. I sent them intentionally to the Baltimore City School System. All of them graduated, and all of them are tax-paying citizens. I will tell you this. I was a school board member, and the experience that I had for six years developing budgets, working at the highest level of a school system that is still torn, is unparalleled. Experience matters. We cannot risk the development and the growth of our great community to people who have no public service record. They have tremendous ideas, but no track record. Track records consist of consistency and service over time. I spent 35 years working in the governor's office, the legislature. I also worked in state agencies, and I helped those people who were struggling to get off of welfare, find jobs. I am confident that my communication skills, my ability to build coalitions, and also my knowledge of this community can lead to tremendous advantages and assets for this community that's strong, but needs to be stronger. So I'm running because I love this community, I care about you, and I want to work with you to make this community better. And one last thing. I ran against Entombit last time, and I had the courage to do it. It was a tough race. I have the experience this time, and I think that I am the best candidate, and I'm asking for your support April 26th. Again, my name is George Van Hook.
Thank you very much to the candidates for those opening remarks. We all appreciated learning a bit more about you and the passion which you bring to the race. So beginning with our round one questions, and before we start, it's those who have come in. There are index cards in the back. Write down any questions that you may have. We're gonna have a round two where we will collate those and ask a representative sample of them. We can pass those to Dana Andrusik in the front. So turn into question one. And Ryan Dorsey, you will begin, and then we'll move back to Marcus Dent in alphabetical order. In regards to community organizing, supporting neighborhoods, and making positive change in the city, what is one initiative or change that you have made that you are most proud of, and why?
Thank you. Baltimore City has been dramatically lagging in its efforts to develop complete streets, transit equity throughout the city in a way that we are continuing to perpetuate a car-centric vision of the city that's out of step with other progressive cities in this country and across and around the world. The project to rebuild the Hartford Road Bridge was several years in planning, while advocates from neighbors in neighboring communities and cycling advocates and pedestrian safety advocates across the city had been calling for the pedestrian and cycling areas to be made safe and protected from automobiles traveling across the bridge. It had been in planning for several years and not heard any support from our current councilman or the Department of Transportation. I wrote a petition to have those cycle lanes protected, which would effectively protect the pedestrian areas. The Department of Transportation said why they wouldn't do it the way that I proposed. I gave them a second proposal, and they told me it was a great proposal, but they weren't going to change the plans. Nine months later, after lobbying our state delegates here in the 43rd District and having coordination with them, and continuing to show up to the Neighborhoods Association meetings throughout this district and pressing the Department of Transportation every time they showed up, nine months after being told they would not absolutely change the plans, they are changing those plans to incorporate every aspect of my proposal to create a safer area for pedestrians and cyclists in a way that sets precedent for the entire rest of Hartford Road to be redeveloped into a more safer, more equitable area that's better supportive of local businesses and is in step with exactly what we have immediately as you cross the county line at Taylor Road, where four lanes reduces to only two lanes and bike lanes. This sets precedent for the rest of the city to pursue what it should be pursuing already.
Thank you. Jermaine Jones, same question?
That's a tough question, because there's so many things I'm proud to say I've done throughout the entire city, such as, you know, when Walmart wanted to come in and we fought against the Walmart because they didn't want to pay good wages and harm small businesses. But that wouldn't be it. I would love to say it's, you know, when we pushed the demand that there was more summer jobs for the youth, but that probably isn't it. I think the most important one was the one that we had a coalition around passing a local hiring law. Passing a law that required contractors, when they use city dollars, to hire a certain portion of local residents. Before, I've witnessed so many times developers come in and receive tax and tips and bring in the jobs and promised jobs, but when it comes to redevelopment, they bring their own crew and leave. You know, but with the jab with that, with the partnership of Jack Young and the rest of the city council, we did pass a local hiring law requiring that when developers come in, they have to hire a certain portion of the city resident. And one of the first things I want to do when I become a city councilperson is finish that work and make that requirement even larger with even more team. Because I've witnessed firsthand what a job can do for a person. A job means so much to a person who doesn't have one. It gives them dignity, it gives them respect for themselves, and it helps our community. So I had to choose one piece of, you know, legislation, not even legislation, but organization. I think that would be it, because a job is so important to everyone. And I'll ask you, ask yourself, where would you be tomorrow if you didn't have a job? And that's the situation a lot of people in our city are in. And that's one of the things I want to change when I become a city council. So I'm proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alicia Jones, the same question?
There's an African proverb that says, "When you educate a girl, you educate a nation." And so for me, my proudest accomplishment in community organizing has been with my Beautiful Butterfly mentoring program, where we empower girls to be confident, socially poised, and ambitious by engaging them in their communities, imparting social etiquette skills, increasing their literacy, and encouraging sisterhood. I have a heart for the homeless, and so one of our biggest initiatives that we have done through this program is a program that's called He Ain't Us, where we solicit citywide individual fraternity sororities and different organizations to come together and donate items for Baltimore's homeless population meeting their basic needs. So if there's anything to be proud of, I'm proud of the fact that over the last two years, each year, we have been able to collect over a thousand items each year and donate it to the Franciscan Center, who services this population. It's one thing to be someone who's in office, but it's another thing to be someone who generally loves people, not just the people of your district, but the people of the city. And that is where my heart lies, with the people of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. George Van Hook, the same question, please?
Again, my name is George Van Hook, running for city council in the 3rd District. I want you to realize that over 35 years, many things have been done to change communities. But the most significant thing that I am proud of is my work on the school board. In that period, I was able to rewrite, with many others, the family community engagement policy, which right now is the basis of families interacting with schools. We were able to create a closer relationship with school governance for every parent. We were able to open up the school board hearings to have more transparency, more discussions about budgets, and more input into policy. So I'm very, very proud of the fact that I was part of the catalyst that changed the way parents deal with one of the most critical institutions in their life, which is the public school system of Baltimore City. And I believe that I made schools better in the process.
Thank you.
For anybody in the back, there's seats up front here. There's like three or four open seats if you want to come up. Sorry.
We have to attend to housekeeping, I appreciate that. Marcus Dent, the same question, please?
It doesn't cut into my time, but... No worries, no worries. You know, my proudest accomplishment that I can see as a public servant is my Dent Group, delivering education needs together. I was fortunate enough that my parents sent me to great colleges, where I earned my bachelor's degrees, a master's degree in IT. That is my skill set, that was my gift. So I gave that gift back to the community that I love. And it's just amazing to see a lot of my former students, who are also 3rd District Presidents, who I've trained and employed, who come out to support me this evening. When you have a vehicle to employ residents, when you have a vehicle to enact change, you need to do so. My counterpart, Ryan Dorsey, he has a family business. They have yet to employ any person of color since 1930. They have yet to employ any woman since 1930. Check their website. So, when you have a gift, when you have a vehicle, you need to use it to really impart change. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So moving to the second question, and Jermaine Jones, you will lead off, and then we'll loop around back to Ryan Dorsey. As residents, we assume that those who are running for city council want to help constituents to continue to make the district even stronger and address needs as they arise. Why have you chosen to run for city council? And what is it about you that makes you unique or stand out from the others who are running for this position?
As I stated in my introduction, I'm running for city council because I feel as though our district needs someone who on day one has the experience and track record necessary to give our district the proper representation it does. Two of the major responsibilities as a city councilperson, if you look up in city charters, one, passing legislation, and two, constituent services. One, as far as passing legislation, I've attended numerous city council hearings, testified at city council hearings numerous times. I've also helped introduce legislation, helped champion legislation, fight legislation, and pass legislation. I'm a political science major. I understand what it takes to get things done that's going to make our neighborhoods better. The second thing, constituent services. I understand what it means to represent a large amount of people. I represent over a thousand men and women in construction right now, where I handle their grievances, negotiate their contracts, make sure they have any work responsibilities, and manage an office. If they have any job issues, they come to me. And that's one of the biggest things. You have to understand what it means to have a team and putting that team together to prioritize issues and making sure you put issues together. In addition to that, I've worked with coalitions and groups to solve these problems, because no one can handle any one problem on their own. If they think they have all the solutions and they can do it on their own, they're lying. It takes people who know how to organize a background, know how to bring people together to solve the tough problems here in our city. But that's the reason why I was unqualified to be a city councilperson. Thank you.
Alicia Jones, the same question?
It's important to me to first distinguish myself from my colleagues as a public servant and not a politician. I have dedicated my life, my career, and my education to being in a position where I can serve and make a positive impact on my community. I'm running for city council because I want to revitalize the 3rd District by encouraging and advocating for better quality schools, stimulating economic development, and increasing government transparency. My love for education has resulted in a Bachelor of Arts in English from Morgan State University, a Master's in Public Administration from the University of Baltimore, and a Master's in Business Administration from the University of Baltimore, three colleges in Baltimore City. My work as a project manager and a partnership manager, I deal every day with the bureaucratic process of Baltimore City government, whether it's budgeting, procurement, or zoning. As a small-profit founder, I know what it means to implement high-quality programs on a shoestring budget. As a partnership manager, every day I deal with, how do I, in this position, make sure that the taxpayer's dollar is optimized and that we are providing high-quality services to our communities and which money was used for? As a former legislative aide for a state senator, for four years, I know what it means to help constituents. I have fought hard all my career for people, and that's what I intend to do as your next city councilwoman, if given the honor. Thank you.
Let me start with the end first. If you add up the work experience of everyone on this panel, it does not add up to what I've done in 36 years. I do not believe that anyone on this panel can hit the ground running because they've never been in a situation where they were responsible for high-level management at the city level or even the state. And so, I'm not even going to compare myself. There is no comparison. I am the most experienced candidate. However, my platform is based on several principles. I want to invest in our children, because they have been forgotten. Second, I want to empower citizens, because your voice needs to be amplified through greater transparency, through closeness to the process, and through great communication. I also want to make sure that we have safe communities, which is community policing and creating the partnerships, which are catalysts for synergy, and also the kind of level of communication that will make sure that every community has security, safety, and a relationship that matters. And finally, I want to promote great business, and that is a matter of using Morgan State University and other resources to help our businessmen write great business plans and establish and cultivate relationships with patrons, customers, and the community that they want support from. And so, experience matters. Please remember that.
Thank you. Marcus Dent, the same question, please?
The reason I'm running for city council is simple as this. It's a continuation of my service. Having served in the military, I've been responsible for 240 individuals' lives with a $240 million budget. So I have the experience of service on a global level. None of my other counterparts has that. I have the experience of service also at the state level, having served under Keith Mitchell as well. I understand how to really enact programs that can pour more energy and love into our youth. I currently serve as the chairman of the board at Northwood Baseball League. I am directly responsible for 400 young people's baseball lives. None of my other counterparts can say that. The things that I'm doing in the community are as a private citizen, so imagine what I can do as your councilman.
Thank you. Ryan Dorsey, the same question, please?
As a lifelong resident of this district, as one with more than a decade of experience working in a small business that provides a number of people family-sustaining wages, benefits consistent and flexible hours, and does provide good customer service much along the lines of what I believe constituent service work is. And as one with a background in the arts, which is entirely unique among, I believe, candidates across the city at this point. I believe I bring things that are common among the residents of Baltimore City and our district, but also some things that are entirely unique to the council, new perspective. I, with my background in the arts, I believe that we have to take a vision for what the future of the city is. As we are a post-industrial city where manufacturing is probably not coming back, we have to look at the things that the city is producing rather well. And for me, that's culture. I'm a graduate of the Baltimore School for the Arts, and I have a bachelor's degree in music composition from the Peabody Conservatory. Yet, there's not really much of a pipeline from our public school system into universities and into schools like MICA, where we cultivate students for a career in the arts. But I've also done transit advocacy work that's based on research that says where we develop cycling infrastructure and pedestrian safety along business corridors, small business support improves, and new businesses come. And these are the kind of simple, kind of big-picture things that I think we should do.
Thank you. So, moving on to the third question, and Alicia Jones, you will lead off with this. This district encompasses many neighborhoods with various needs, some similar, some different. In what areas overall do you believe the district is flourishing? And in what areas do you believe we need more attention given by the city council?
Thank you for that question because it actually is a very good and thought-provoking question. The median age for a resident in the third district is thirty-six. However, we have a very majority aging population. So, I believe that we are doing a good job of colectively around the city of focusing on, you know, youth initiatives and seniors. But I also do believe that we need more to protect our seniors and to make sure that our youth will make it to the age of becoming a senior. So, for me, it is about protecting seniors and making sure that there's enough programming for our youth to thrive in Baltimore City.
Thank you. Mr. Van Buren, the same question?
I believe that in certain areas, particularly in the housing industry and in areas that relate to property ownership, the northeast section is flourishing in more than a few. And as I've knocked on doors, I've seen houses that were much nicer than the one I lived in. But I also share my colleague's answer, which is we must invest in our youth. One of the issues that we have, and one of the reasons that I have devoted my life to serving youth, is that our youth are not being educated. They are not given the culture of excellence, and they are not given the resources to succeed. And so, I believe that that underinvestment, the criminal ignorance of not giving our children the things that they need is something that we must correct. So, even in the northeast section, we need to do better in developing the resources. That may include having recreation centers. It also includes improving our schools and equipping them with the resources necessary to have dynamic after-school programs. It also relates to adult literacy and education where our schools can be community centers or community schools where the whole community can learn and profit from a school which will be open for extended hours. So, these are things I think that we can do better, and we can do them collectively and improve not only our families but our whole community in the process.
Thank you. Mr. Dent, same question, please?
I want to echo George with homeownership. We have great homeownership in five of the areas of the third district. But I think our number-one issue right now has to be improving our public safety and our relationship between our community and our officers. Get our officers out of the cars. Get our officers back to the community committee. Reengage them, reintroduce them to our community members. Some of our residents have never even met their officers, never met their beat cops. And that is a problem. The first time you encounter a uniformed officer should not be something negative. I have weekly meetings right now with Sergeant Hardy and Lieutenant Preston from northeast district. And we work directly with Major Worley to enact these community enrichment programs. Case in point, we did cops and kids baseball games this summer, which went very, very well with the youth engaging with police officers. And after that, we did breakfast with Santa. And our Santa Claus, I didn't do very well with him. Didn't say it was a real Santa, but that's neither here nor there. But just more engagement with our officers and more engagement with our youth and our community as a whole. We have several more initiatives planned in the coming months, one of which is going to be community cookouts for our officers over here in Rock. We just want to make sure that our officers and our community have a good working relationship. So, when we do have an issue, when we do have a concern that comes up, we don't necessarily have to dial nine-one-one. We have our officers' cellphones and numbers. And those are some of the things that we really need to really be in community and really care about each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, the same question, please?
It's true, we have some differences from one neighborhood to the next. But across the board, we are the safest, most solidly middle-class district in the whole city. We are the only district in the entire city without a food desert. My belief is that we not only because of this have an opportunity, but I would say an obligation to bring people in different neighborhoods together behind progressive legislation and policy that's going to improve the quality of life for all of Baltimore City's residents. With three hundred and forty-four homicides occurring Baltimore City in two thousand and fifteen, exceeding record numbers, and only five of them happen in our district, and that's not even one more than the previous year, we have an obligation as a district to come together and say enough is enough. We have it very good here. We need to do things, we need to take measures to improve the quality of working conditions through an increase in the minimum wage in Baltimore City, housing conditions by improving the availability of affordable housing in areas of opportunity, and transit conditions, the basics. If we don't have where we live, where we work, and how we get between the two in order in the city, it is very difficult for me to expect a whole lot better of our public safety, public health, and educational outcomes. We need to get the very basics in order, and our district is in a better position than any other in this city to drive that conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, the same question?
Sorry. Where our district is flourishing is in diversity. It's simple. Elijah Cummins once said, and it stuck to me, diversity is our promise. It's not our problem, it's our promise. And we live in one of the most diverse districts throughout the entire city. I'm proud to say that. One of the places where we can do a little better, one is vacancies. You know, we have a lot of vacant houses in the third district. And we need to do more to make sure we hold owners to those vacant properties accountable. How we're going to do that? Need less parking enforcement and more code enforcement. You know, you wouldn't believe how many times I called Department of Housing and threw up three-one-month trying to get some of this stuff done. You know, they always say, well, they don't have as many people to get it done as quickly and I would like them to get it done. Well, it's time that we put people like, you know, the city and Paul Brown, the other five feet to the fire and say, look, we need to make sure we hold these people accountable. Other places, your agency accountable. Other place where we can do well is new property front. We live in a northeast police district. We live in the largest police district in the entire city. There's over a hundred and thirty thousand residents when other districts have as little as sixty thousand, forty thousand residents. We need to make sure we do one of two things. One, divide our district in half, or two, allocate more resources to our district because residents here pay taxes just like everyone else. And the third thing I would like to do is make sure we invest in our profitable business core or have businesses that people in our neighborhood can patron. And the only way we can do that is by creating incentives for small businesses rather than just big businesses like Axon going downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, moving on to our fourth question, and I hope the audience is writing down questions as we hear from the candidates and pass them forward to Dana and the Beach, so we can have those. So, the fourth question, and this will start with you, Mr. Van Buren. If elected to city council, what do you see as the top three priorities for our district? In your answer, please elaborate on immediate priorities, things that you would pack for six months, and perhaps longer-term priorities as well.
Again, one of the greatest problems we have is not investing in our children properly. And so, I would say to you, one of my greatest priorities will be to continue and actually increase our investment in our children, particularly through our school system. And so, I will work and continue to make contributions to every school in our district and also work within the framework that has been established for school administration. Second thing, I think we need to create safer communities. And as I've heard already today, that means relationships with the police department need to be improved. I'm an advocate of community policing, where community and police officers are working in tandem to make sure that things are safe, sound, and that we plan. And we can use our resources to prevent crimes instead of reacting to them. And that could be police athletic leagues. That can mean also the kinds of things that Mr. Dent so aptly stated. But the partnership needs to be in the framework of community policing. I also believe that we need to create an empowerment of each citizen. And that means that your voice as a citizen needs to be heard. So many times, we find that our citizens are not involved until the last minute. The issues that we are suffering from relate to poor communication. We need to make sure that the councilperson brings issues to citizens on a consistent basis, reacts to problems, and also that there is accountability in providing answers when answers are needed. And that means citizens have to be close to government.
Thank you. Mr. Dent, the same question, please?
Very simple. Education, employment, public safety. I'm sorry, education. Talking about our first six months in office, I want to make sure I go through a needs assessment at each one of the schools in my district. My mother being Baltimore City Public School Assistant Principal and former principal, she instilled the educational aspect in myself and my sister growing up. One of the things I've already done is partnered with several of the principals in our district already to find out about the community school opportunities that we had. Talked to some of our principals about the charter school opportunities we had. We can bridge that gap. I wanted to be on the front lines when the charter schools came under fire. And I was there to make sure that they had the necessary resources that they need to move forward. Additionally, we talk about employment. Again, we have to make sure that our residents have a vehicle to be trained, employed, and a means that they can do so and contribute. And finally, public safety. Again, like George said, police partnership. We have to make sure you have an open dialogue with your uniformed officers. They should know you by your first name. A lot of our officers have never even seen one running for city council. Some councilmembers never even go over to Argonne Drive to enter to the police station to see what's going on, to look at the crime stats, to see where they can be of assistance. I went on ride-alongs, midnight shift. I went on ride-along station. I went on ride-along swing shift. I know all the officers in the northeast district. They know who I am. We have a great working relationship as-is. So, you talk about going down to city hall and representing you as your councilperson? I can do so on day one because I've done so as a private citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, the same question, please?
The issues of our district are inseparable from the issues of the city as a whole. It really comes down to absolute basics, housing, employment, transportation. We can do better to fill the vacancies in our district by attracting new residents to... You know, I've talked about attracting artists and creating programs to help artists come into vacant housing, to stimulate local economy, which has always followed artist-driven development. But we also need a better inclusionary zoning law, which I will work to put forward. And we need to promote community land trust as a means of creating permanently affordable housing in Baltimore City in all neighborhoods. I will put forth legislation to increase the minimum wage to at least fifteen dollars per hour. Job growth may be slow, but we have thousands of people working for poverty wages in Baltimore City. We can use legislation to give every one of those people a raise. And I will continue to do the advocacy work that I have done to improve Hartford Road's walkability, bikeability, but also see to it that roads like Hillen Road become safer for pedestrians in neighborhoods like Perrin Lock, Stonewall, and Winston. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, the same question, please?
My three top priorities as a councilperson is going to be vacancies, it's going to be public safety, and the third thing is investment in our children. So, let's go down the line. The first thing is vacancies, and the property, vacant properties. One thing we need to do is make sure we create a tier system. Because currently, we noticed I've knocked on over six thousand doors so far in the district. And one thing I hear, these neighbors are fed up with the bank-owned property next door, and the bankers are taking care of the property. The city always has to cut the grass. It's unfortunate that this bank gets the same fifty, sixty-dollar fines sometimes that what the residents get when they don't cut their grass. You know, and they allow them to holler. But what I like to do is see a multi-tier system, where maybe we can find banks or people who aren't resident homes or they don't live in a home, a little more to make sure we hold them accountable, to make sure that they're going to be good neighbors throughout our neighborhood. The second thing is, as far as property fronts, cutting the district size inherently or making sure we get more resources in the northeast district. Because knocking on doors, like people tell me all the time, how long it takes for an officer to come in the neighborhood to answer their call and work with officers such as Officer Banks and Officer Jones to make sure we get these resources and get them into the district. And the third thing is we need more resources for our youth. But people always say we don't have the money. We have great fields like down at Harrow Run Park where we can have, you know, girls' soccer, girls' lacrosse, and boys' lacrosse, but we don't have the money. What we need to do is make sure we audit every department so we can find the money. If we audit every department, I'm pretty sure we'll find the money's there. And the money that we find, we need to allocate it to our children and make sure they have things to do because the idle money is only up to terrible things. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, same question, please?
So, my top three priorities would be education investment, particularly infrastructure. Issues within third district schools is really infrastructure. Over the last three weeks, I have been judging spread competitions at schools throughout, not only the district but citywide. And I literally was in a school last week where the ceiling in the gym was literally falling in. And I was so afraid for these kids that they were cheering and doing their routines, and we were looking up at the ceiling as if it was about to come down on us. So, infrastructure, investing in twenty-first-century schools is a must right now. We have Northwood Elementary, who is up to be a twenty-first-century school, and that's important that we make sure that that money is there for that investment. We also have police relations, as everyone has said. It's a part of knowing and feeling safe in your home is knowing that if something happens that you can trust that your police enforcement is going to be there to protect and to serve. I also will deal with transit, expanding the reach of transit by providing improved walking and bicycling conditions. For me, it's about people. We can have all the organized bureaucracy and district office we want, but I won't be the candidate who will tell you to come to me. I'm going to come to you. Instead of me putting money into an office, I can put money into programming for you where I can actually make a difference. So, that for me, it's about people.
Thank you very much. So, moving on to question five, and I think that would just start at the beginning of the alphabet. So, this will start off with you, Mr. Dent. Transparency is very important in government, especially in local government. What are your strategies for remaining transparent and sharing information to keep constituents informed of the things that are happening around them that may impact their quality of life?
Transparency starts with honesty. You have to be an honest public servant. Provide your information, cell phone number, so your residents can get in contact with the email address. Again, I'm a strong advocate for IT. I have different mobile apps and different mobile devices to let people know what's going on. Keep your abreast of everything that's going on in our district. Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. Get the messages out there to you guys to say, hey, these are some issues that I'm seeing. What are you seeing? Have that dialogue so when I do go down to city hall, I have to champion these issues, I'm speaking on your behalf in a tone and voice that you would like and not doing something that is adversely from what you want to do down at city hall. So, one of the things I want to make sure I do is make sure that everyone in the district has access to me, access to city halls, so they can have an opportunity to voice their opinions, get their voices heard, and go up there and fight for the things that we need right now in our district. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, the same question?
I'm the only candidate here who has said I will have no other job. I plan to be a full-time councilperson. And like I've been saying for many months, I will have an office in the district. You can drop in anytime you want, but I'll also be available to come to you. But I also said I will hold regular town hall meetings, district-wide meetings, so that we can talk about legislation that's coming up in city hall, that's in committee. And we can talk about the legislation we should be bringing before city hall, things that our community wants to see happen, and as well as things that are happening in Annapolis. The last two Tuesdays, I was the only person here. I was one of the only people running for any office in Baltimore City in Annapolis, lobbying for police accountability reform. If we want to talk about transparency, we need to talk about our service providers in the city remaining accountable to the residents of Baltimore City rather than allowing legislators who represent us right here in the forty-third district to put forth harmful bills like House Bill ten sixteen, which is in session right now and will actually remove accountability from our police officers here in Baltimore City from us, making it harder for us to keep officers accountable in cases of brutality and misconduct. These are the kind of things that we need a stage, a regular town hall forum to bring forth, as well as things that everybody's going to use, like social media. It's two thousand and sixteen. Of course, I'm going to use Facebook and Twitter and Instagram and email. So, you know, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, the same question, transparency?
As much as I would love to sit here in front of you and say I put my job after this election, I don't work for my parents, and I actually have to go to work tomorrow. But what I can promise you is that I will not let my job get in the way of me being the city councilperson, and this will be my first priority. But to get to answer your question, transparency, the first thing is accessibility. I'll always make sure I'm accessible. My number you'll find on the back, my direct cell phone number you'll find on the back of all my literature. Feel free to call me anytime and reach out to me. As far as transparency to local government, which is what your question was, the only thing we can guarantee we'll get from local government is what we force them to give us. Unfortunately, we always find out about mismanagement of money it's because news channel two or channel eleven or thirteen done some investigation. channel two, or channel eleven, or thirteen done some investigation. So what we need to do is make sure we put laws on the books that'll force local government to open these books up finally, and that's with audit and taxing legislation. That's the only way we can get it done. People can make promises. As a councilperson, you can't even, I won't even be able to get into some of those books and find out where the money's spent until we make them, because those agencies work for the money. And we don't, we can't just walk in and say, I'll show you my book, show me your book. So would you have my promise that I'll help push legislation that'll open up accessibility, open up these books, to see where agencies are spending our money? Because taxpayers don't mind paying taxes, they just want to see where the money's coming. You know, and it's unfortunate that when you're driving in Baltimore City, the second you hit the county line, you feel like the roads are different. You feel like it's a little smoother. And people want to leave Baltimore City and go in these other places. So I'll open these books up and put them in a way online where people can see where the money's being spent. You have my promise as a councilperson to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, same question?
So my campaign is built on the purpose of keeping the residents informed, involved, and empowered. I think that it's very important that you know the workings of your councilperson. One of the reasons why I got into this race is because as a community association president, I didn't see the visibility of my councilperson, and I want that connection for all of you. One thing that I have for tonight and that I want to address is I commend Ryan's mother on creating intergenerational wealth that he's able to say that I can be a full-time councilman and not have no other job. I have three degrees, and the way my student loans are set up, that's not possible right now. But I can promise you that that will not be a problem for me in terms of multitasking and making this my number one priority. I feel like this has been a very good example of what needs to go on in the district. As I said, protecting our seniors, but creating those programs for our youth to be able to say that my parents started a business for me. That way, I can focus on my education, I can grow into owning my own business and finishing what my parents started for me. That's what being a councilperson is about, finding those unique opportunities and expanding upon them, and that's what I want to do for the Third District.
Thank you. Mr. Van Hook, the same question, transparency?
My very fine pastor has an expression, and I'll give it to you. It's all about relationships or it ain't about nothing. When we create relationships that are authentic, based on integrity, and also based on consistency, we create strength for communities. So transparency is about communication. Transparency is about consistency, and transparency is about acting when we communicate. My pledge to you is that I will create a community advisory council. It will consist of every community association in this district. I will regularly meet with them, I will also deal with issues that emerge from our discussions, and I will report on a regular basis what's going on. But beyond that, I will visit the churches, I will visit the schools, which I'm already substituting in, and doing all sorts of things to bring everyday people closer to the process. I mean children, I mean students, I mean senior citizens, every segment of our community will be part of that discussion. And as I heard my colleagues say, I will come to you, but you will also know where I am. I've lived in this area as an adult, and I heard somebody say they grew up here. I've lived in this area as an adult for more than twenty-eight years, and I pay taxes, and I know about relationship building, and I want to say to you that the same things I did for my family, I will do for your family. So it is all about relationships, and I will move aggressively to create them.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our next question, and Mr. Dorsey will start with this. Our broader communities have received much attention recently due to the planned redevelopment of Northwood Shopping Center. The resulting Northwood comments is for mixed-use retail dining and service for the community. There's been some controversy over the plan to include housing that would be leased to students at Morgan State University. What is your position on the inclusion of students in this project? And what would you do as a city councilperson to support economic redevelopment here and everywhere in our district?
I'm on the record with this already, that I support the development, but I also support community involvement in shaping it in ways that it could be improved. I oppose this whole idea that we should discriminate against students. It's going to be a great development. It's going to be the biggest private investment in our district in a generation, and I'm the only person up here who even bothered to call the developer. I spoke to him again today, the plans are moving along, he's developing a better relationship with Senator Conway over the plans, and it's looking like Hillen Road Improvement Association is moving towards approval of the plans. I personally walked through the neighborhood canvassing, polling neighbors in the Hillen Road Improvement Association, and found that the representatives in the association were not actually representative of the consensus of the residents of the neighborhood, many of whom were completely unaware of any plans at all, a majority of whom actually favored the development as planned, including housing, and actually say, look, these students are already living in our neighborhood, we'd like to get a better plaza out of the deal. I think that answers it.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, same question?
Yes. When I first heard about the development, I was excited about it because I know that area and that plaza needs development, it needs some new activity, it needs new life put into it. It was unfortunate, when I attended the community association meeting, the community expressed to me that there wasn't much dialogue with the community, and that they had reservations regarding the size of the student house, and that they were under the perception it would be one size, and now it's over three, it's about three hundred and fifty units they're talking about. So when it comes to redevelopment, my plan is any development that happens in this district, it has to happen in conjunction with the community, with every community. Because we see what happens when there's a difference between development and community, it slows things down, it stops something great from happening. So there needs to be a compromise there. The developer needs to get together along with the community, and there needs to be some sort of compromise. Maybe it's not as big of a unit as possible, you know, maybe it's not as big of a housing unit as they would like, because there's other concerns in other neighborhoods, you know, such as original Northwood, where you have Court seven, the different courts, the courts over there in Marco, where they currently have student housing, you know, and if this three hundred unit comes in Northwood Shopping Center, then those students at Marco Homes housing will end up going down there. So who's going to move into Court six and seven at Marco Homes housing? So we have to answer that question there. There's a lot of dynamics, but the only way we can get to these answers is if we bring the community and the developer together, and as your councilperson, that's what I'm committed to doing, that's what I've done throughout the city for years now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, same question, please?
So I'm going to be honest and say I really wrestle with this question. One reason in particular is because being the only graduate from Morgan State University, I can tell you plenty of nights that I walked from Blount Towers over to the Northwood Plaza trying to get something to eat and not really having a healthy selection, or even a good grocery store to go to. So to have a development coming is a blessing to this university and to this community. The one thing that really bothered me was the fact that I bought my first home at twenty-six. And so we see all around us, especially in DC, the gentrification of people due to their race, and now you're telling me in Baltimore City, we're about to do the same thing because of someone's age, and that's unfair. It's unfair that only one community organization is trying to have say over something that affects far more than one organization. And so for me, it's about everyone is not going to get what they want out of this, but it's for us to come to a level playing term. Instead of just saying no Morgan students can't, it can be worked out so that only graduate or honor students can be housed in this. It's also more effective to have Morgan students stay in it because we can regulate it by having resident assistants stay in these buildings, whereas if we open it up to the public, we have no control over that. So for someone to say that I don't want someone to live here based off of their age is just unfair, and I'm totally in support of Morgan housing being connected to our community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Van Hook, the same question, please?
I'm in favor of redevelopment of the area that we call the Northwood Shopping Center or Plaza. However, I am not in favor of processes that exclude communities or create divisive action. And so the way this has unfolded is all wrong, and it reflects poor communication from the beginning until the end. We have to do better, and we need to create situations where everyone can be happy. No one disagrees that we need to have something better in that space. But what I think we do disagree with is the process that excludes certain members. And so we have to do better in that process. One of the things that I would advocate would be creating planning commissions where we can talk about not only the development of the Northwood Plaza, but as I see in this question, developing the whole area, because there are other areas in our district that need development. How should we do this? We first have to sit down and plan together. We need to have our elected officials part of that discussion. We need to have community associations part of the discussion. And ultimately, we need to have citizens from all walks of life involved in a active discussion that will lead to a plan that we can implement. So again, I'm in favor of doing something new in that area, but I'm not in favor of excluding anyone. We need to redevelop it and make it something that will improve property value and the quality of life in Northwood.
Thank you. Mr. Dent, same question, please?
Having grown up and utilized Northwood Shopping Center my entire life was to get my hair cut, over eighty days, my father's taking me to Hackensett when he used to be there, my mother's taking my relatives to Co-Factors, it's nigh dead in my heart. Hadn't been occurred, Morgan State's to pursue my doctor's degree. Had to look at it from both the sides of the fence, from community and from a student perspective as well. Like George said, it starts with relationships. In order to get a new process or even do a plan, you have to have relationships with all parties involved. I already have a relationship with Senator Conway, I already have a relationship with Morgan State University, I already have a relationship with many of the developers, not particularly this project, but many developers throughout the city. So if you can get everyone to the table, to have that dialogue, to have that communication, that's what you really need out of your councilperson, then we won't be in the situation we are right now where decisions have already been made out of proper input from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving to our last question in round one, I hope everyone has had an opportunity to pass their questions forward to Dana, and this will start off with you, Mr. Jones. In April, only one candidate will win the nomination to city council. If you are not that person, how will you continue to serve the community?
Rather than talk about what I'm going to do, I'm going to talk about what I've already done. In two thousand and eleven, I was an ambitious twenty-six-year-old, and I decided to run for city council against someone who's currently running for mayor. It didn't quite work out for me, and like a lot of candidates, they disappear and fall off, and you might see them four years later. But ever since that happened, I've been out in the community working. You know, I helped create a democratic club here in Baltimore, the Best Democratic Club, with a lot of great people who are running, where I got elected leaders out and tried to engage people, register people to vote, and get people to understand the importance of getting engaged in the political process. I also helped fight and hold Walmart accountable when they decided that they wanted to develop in our neighborhood and create bad jobs, low-paying jobs. I've also helped push and pass legislation to require contractors to hire local residents. I'm not doing this stuff just because I want to run for office, I'm doing this stuff because I care about my neighborhood. I care about Baltimore City, I care about the Third District, and I'm going to continue to fight for our neighborhood, whether or not this goes my way or not. And I want to continue to be a voice for the people in our neighborhood, for the voice of the people in the city who don't have a voice. That's what I've done before, and that's what I'll continue to do if this doesn't go my way in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, same question, please?
Although I would prefer to be a United City Councilwoman in the Third District, I do plan on, as I still am at this very moment, expanding programming for our youth throughout the district. We started programming in the West Baltimore and Harlem Park Elementary, and we have now expanded to the district. And for the fiscal year seventeen, we're actually looking to expand into three schools within the district. And so I think it's important that we make that investment into our youth, and that is what I'm committed to doing throughout this. I also think that it's real important that, you know, people see and understand that I didn't just start this. I might not have twenty and thirty years of experience, but I do have experience and a very proven track record. All of my girls graduated. We have taken them from having a thirty percent literacy rate to being the next level of their reading. So I have the proven track record, and that's what I'm going to continue to do, to prove everyone wrong who says that our youth don't have a way, that our youth should go from elementary to the prison pipeline. That's not what it's about. It's about creating opportunities for our youth so that we can expand on them and make them, you know, viable citizens for our community. And so that's what I plan on doing, continuing my work.
Thank you. Mr. Van Hook, the same question?
I will continue to invest in our youth. Right now, I'm a substitute teacher, and I've taught in every school in our district at least once. I enjoy interacting with our young people, because I cannot say to you that we should invest in our youth if I'm not doing that myself. There's no more basic level than working with them one-on-one, or one-on-twenty, or one-on-twenty-five in a classroom and dealing with all the changes associated with that. I'm also going to continue to work with mentoring programs, particularly those focusing on the needs of the African-American males and those that have been so underserved in our community. I'm going to continue to go and work with churches who I think need to be more involved in reaching out and mentoring our young people in communities. And so my skills as an administrator, a communicator, and someone with thirty-five years of experience is going to be put to use. And then finally, I'm retired, and that means I have a lot of time to pick and choose projects, and I will continue to do that with all the energy and all the creativity I can bring to the process. So I, who have lived here as an adult for twenty-eight years, will continue to do what adults do, which is to take care of those things that are related to the family.
Thank you. Mr. Dent, same question, please?
Programs and initiatives I'm involved in now, down at the Southwood Avenue twenty-six, case in point, April thirtieth, we're on the baseball pitch opening day, everybody comes out, we got great hot dogs, snowballs, so I'm so focused, the rain coming down, a lot raining, sorry, I was pitching. But still, programs are still going to continue. Our program's in the school system right now. This past year, we provided over ten thousand school supplies in the district already, Lenmont Elementary, Northwood Elementary, Hamilton Elementary as well. We've done that, Dent Group, giving all these supplies to these schools, we'll continue to do that. They're showing us paying the five schools with a bigger budget coming in. So these things are going to continue to go on. I already had five summer camps that are planned for free, already know these police stations are going to help out with that initiative as well. Also McDonald's has graciously put up a lot of the resources to help us do that. In addition to that, these programs are self-sustaining, don't require any city or federal funding, a lot of it is market and dental funding, but it's still going to keep on going because of my passion. Like many of my colleagues, we all have particular passions. I've worked with a lot of these individuals on other projects, they helped with my project. George used to teach my class. So the thing is, we all have to be community, and we all can continue this fight because we all want this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, the same question, please?
Sure. I will simply continue the work of so many people in Baltimore City to provide new opportunities for residents here and to fight for social, racial, economic, and environmental justice in this city and beyond. Yeah, I'm a graduate of the Baltimore School for the Arts. Our college, our high school has a ninety-nine percent acceptance rate into colleges and twice the national average for completion of degrees in six years. That's an amazing opportunity, and we have a program that starts even before high school with the Twigs Program. We have nine-year-olds coming in. I would love to see more people ushered into programs like that to have opportunities for careers in the arts and college readiness, and I'm a member of the alumni advisory committee there. I'll just continue doing stuff like that, but also working with the people on the street in Baltimore City who are working for greater awareness through the arts. in Baltimore City who are working for greater awareness through the arts, for the needs for change in Baltimore to provide a more racially equitable future for Baltimore City residents around such kind of, such opportunities. Just related to that.
Thank you. So that brings us to the end of our round one. And so now, I will take the questions. Dana, did you want? Okay. Okay, yeah, that's fine. So actually, I'm gonna turn over the responsibility of asking questions, so Dana will do the question asking and I'll sit back like the rest of you and listen.
Some of the, a lot of the questions are related. First question. Have you ever attended a Baltimore City Council hearing or voted in a Baltimore City Council election? And follow the money. Where is the money coming from for your campaign? In state, out of state, in district, out of district, individuals, or PACs?
Okay, and I think continuing the order, this would be starting with you, Ms. Jones.
That was a whole lot. That was a whole lot, so.
Have you, have you attended a Baltimore City Council hearing or voted in a Baltimore City Council election? And where's the money coming from for your campaign?
Okay, so yes, I have attended a council hearing. One of the, one of my priorities this time around was the President's bill about putting money for youth investments, so I definitely was front row and center for that one. My campaign, grassroots campaign, coming from the people. Or my pocket. I have focused more on touching the people and door knocking as opposed to fundraising. So there are no PACs, there are no labor unions, there is none of that. It's all strictly from the people.
All right, thank you. Mr. Van Hook, the same question?
I have attended many City Council hearings. I've had the distinction of being on the school board and actually presenting expert testimony to the City Council on matters related to the school system. I also have followed, I have voted certainly in the last City Council race, which, and I had the distinction of voting for myself since I was the only one sitting up here that ran before. The reality is that I've had the experience. The other thing is, I have the money that working people have given me. And it's not a lot of money, but guess what? I'm not boss, I'm not, I don't owe anyone. I'm someone who is independent and I'm proud of the fact that the people who gave me money, they love me, they love my message, and they're not trying to control me.
Thank you. Mr. Dent, the same question? You need to repeat it?
Yeah.
Okay. Dana, could you read the question?
Have you ever attended a Baltimore City Council hearing or voted in a Baltimore City Council election? And where does the money come from in your campaign?
I have attended several Baltimore City Council hearings over the years of particular issues like getting my counterparts. All of my money comes from listening to people in the back two rows. That's my pack of friends. You know, like many of us grassroots, first time running for City Council. Just trying to make a difference really and get some things on the table and have our issues put on the forefront. As far as money's concerned, you can look at my financial reports, pretty much every dollar we get, we spend it. So you can call it a check-to-check campaign if you like to. But again, not big money, no big donors. All my support comes from friends, family, some of our fraternity brothers from college as well. But we got a three-dollar campaign going on right now on Facebook, so if you had three dollars, you believe I should be a next councilperson. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, the same question?
I have attended City Council hearings, yes. I have an interesting record on voting. I've voted in lots of presidential and state elections. I voted in two thousand and four for the City Council when it was an off-year, it was a weird thing, the primaries in two thousand and three and then the general didn't happen until two thousand and four. There has not been a truly contested City Council race in this district where I have lived my entire life since then, and I have abstained from voting in City Council elections in this race since then. I have raised more money than any other person in this race and, or as of at least the January filing report. And overwhelmingly, much more of my money came from this district than any other person up here. I raised sixty-nine thousand dollars. A full twenty-three thousand of that came from within our district and as I continue fundraising, that measure of a third of my money coming from within the district holds. There is only one neighborhood in this entire district where nobody donated to my campaign. So that's where my money comes from, the people of the Third District.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, the same question, please?
Yes, to answer your question, yes, I've attended numerous City Council hearings. Back to people down in City Hall, I think I actually worked there. I've been at numerous times. And have I voted for a City Council person? Yes, yes, numerous times. I would, I wouldn't dare stand here and ask someone to do something that I've never taken part in doing myself. To answer where my money comes from, I have friends, family, a lot of it's grassroots. Some of it has come from labor unions, which are representing small people, people who actually live in the district. When you talk about the Koch Brothers and large big business, you know, the only mechanism and means working men and women have to fight back at that from people who have, come from families with lots of money, is by creating PACs. You know, where they may donate five dollars, you know, of their paycheck to this PAC so they can collectively come together and have a strong voice and support candidates who support them. So I'm proud to say, yes, I've received money from labor unions who all have members, you know, within the district and represent working people throughout the city because that's what I've constantly done. And they understand that I'm a champion for them and will continue to be a champion for the working people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana, you wanna read the next question? And Mr. Menchus, you'll lead off with answering this.
The salary on the council is sixty thousand dollars a year. Will you or will you not be a full-time councilperson?
As I said before, I'm retired. And I believe that answers your question. I do not work except when I substitute in schools. I receive a pension and I'm proud of it because I've worked for more than thirty-six years and I'm not going to say that I will not do anything else because that's a platitude. I mean, I love, Ryan says it all the time, and that might be because he's never, never really had a work history. But the reality is this. The reality is this. The point is, I will be available to do what has to be done and I will devote most of my time to serving the citizens of this fine district.
Thank you. Mr. Dent, the same question, please?
Again, not gonna stop my programs, not gonna stop the work that I'm already doing once I am a councilmember. I'm gonna continue to do that work that includes my small business. I'm not gonna sell it. When I become a councilperson, I'm gonna continue that effort. That small business actually finances a lot of my constituent services that I do now self-financed, so I'm gonna continue to do that as well as a councilperson. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, the same question, please?
I have said this since day one, so I think the record stands. I make less money than that now and I'm a homeowner in this district. I've been a homeowner in this district since two thousand and nine. And I think that in a city where so many people live in such dire poverty and in such deep concentrations of poverty, to call myself a public servant and earn sixty thousand dollars a year when so few, so many people making below twenty thousand dollars a year are almost nothing at all, to call myself a public servant and work for this city and think I should have some other job just as incongruous with the idea of a public servant. I'm here to do the work that I don't think anybody else is gonna do.
Thank you. I apologize about the audio. I know, I know. That's why. Mr. Jones, the same question, please?
Hey, come in the City Council, whoa. Making my neighborhood better has always been and will always be my top priority. It's the reason why I started doing the work I'm doing now and it's the reason why I'm the manager of the labor union. Sixty thousand dollars, that is more than enough to replace my current salary. Now, could I sit here and say I'll quit tomorrow? I currently work for an employer, but probably wouldn't be happy to hear me say I make such commitment. But what I will say is that the residents of this district isn't satisfied with the representation that they get from me because I have a full-time job, you know, we'll definitely, definitely make adjustments because I feel that I'll be more effective as a councilperson than where I'm currently, in my current employment. And my original goal for my job now is to make a difference. And I can make a stronger difference as a councilperson. Nevertheless, I would in my, my current position, if you have my commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, the same question, please?
So one of the great things about being a woman is it's innate for us to be multitaskers. And I just so happen to be great at multitasking and knowing how to prioritize. I'm not going to sit here and say that I'm going to quit my job because I love my job. I work for the Family League of Baltimore and if anybody knows anything about the Family League of Baltimore, we are doing great work in this city. Particularly, I manage a portfolio out of Park Heights. If any of you know, once we got Swatch Machine, a portion of that money has to go to local impact areas. And so, what I do is I make sure that that money that is going to Park Heights is being optimized for those residents of Park Heights. So my position now not only allows me to influence the school system, but it also allows me to have a hand and change somewhere else. And so, no, I'm not going to say that I'm just gonna up and quit my job because we do have that mortgage and those student loan payments, but I am going to promise you that this is a priority.
Thank you very much. So moving on to the next question and Mr. Dent will lead off with answering this. Dana, please?
All right, we're gonna cut the time back to forty-five seconds so we don't drag on. Anyway, you've all said we need to invest in our children. However, Baltimore has some of the best-funded schools and Maryland, Maryland has the highest per capita spending in public schools in America, yet public schools in Baltimore are in a shambles structurally, financially, and academically. The city says there isn't enough money. What is the problem with the Baltimore public school system? Baltimore is funded very highly. The state of Maryland has, on average, the highest funding for public schools in the country, yet Baltimore is structurally, financially, and academically not in good shape. The city claims that there's not enough money, but figures seem to be relied at. And so, what is the problem? Why is, why don't we get delivery of good education from the Baltimore public school system?
I got it now. So looking at city funding right now, specifically, what we see about the schools. First thing we need to do is take a good hard look via audits and see where that money is going, which schools are getting what allocations, and really take a good hard look at what schools need what. Don't go give a hundred basketballs or a hundred textbooks to schools that don't need it. If their walls are falling down or they have poor water systems in their schools. So we can increase our educational footprint if we take a good needs assessment of what each one of these schools actually need and put those resources into those schools. So again, and that by audits, and that by needs assessment, to find out and make sure that money that is allocated to us, we're using it the right way and not going to things that we don't need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, the same question?
We need to audit every city agency. There's obviously money that's being unaccounted, that's not being accounted for. I'm sure that we'll find money that we can real, reallocate to education in just about every corner of city government, including diverting some of the half a billion dollars that's going into the police budget right now into education. We need to increase funding from the state level also. That's gonna be hard. There, there, it's a struggle there. But, but we have a fundamental issue here, that students are coming from neighborhoods and households without, that they're unclean, unhealthy, and unsafe. Parents who are not working or working two jobs and traveling public transportation for poverty wages. Students are not coming to school ready and equipped to be able to learn. We face very serious conditions in which we can expect kids to thrive in school. That's where we need to focus on improving the quality of life for all of our city's residents, making it possible for kids to get an education.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, the same question, please?
Yes, and like most of the other candidates said, the first thing we need to do is audit out agencies, figure out where the money is being spent. As you know, last year, Ms. Harting, we found out that the, that the Baltimore City school system had wasted millions of dollars and well, spent millions of dollars on something else that they wouldn't have been spending at all. This is money that's meant for our children. And the only way we can protect that money is by continually auditing these agencies and looking at where the money's spent. And once we find where those, where that extra money's being spent, we need to reinvest that money back into our children. Also, Baltimore City isn't funding our children from the, at the per people rate as the other counties. One of the reasons why is because we aren't generating the same tax base as other counties generate because we have institutions such as the stadiums and the Maryland and the aquarium downtown in Baltimore that aren't paying taxes that other jurisdictions around us enjoy. But we need to make sure we continue to invest in our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, the same question, please?
It's part of my vision that all Baltimore City people live in a family that thrives. And a part of that is increasing Baltimore City funding into our school system. Right now, I believe we own twelve to thirteen percent and, you know, don't quote me, but I believe it's twelve to thirteen percent into our school. One thing that I've always wanted to do is to increase funding to at least twenty percent. That is one of my short-term goals. One thing that I have that irked me here recently is that DVW, granted, I'm excited that we're getting new trash cans, but if we can get trash cans and put chips inside of them, that is expensive, we can find money for our education. And so, for me, when we want something, we find the money for it. And I want my children and my future children to have a good quality education and a state infrastructure. And so, that's where I hope to go.
Thank you. Mr. Van Hook, the same question?
Ladies and gentlemen, it's not all about money. It's about the quality of strategic planning. It's about relationships with parents. It's about preparing students from the beginning of their life to receive education and value education. And so, I will tell you, having sat on the school board, we have a billion-dollar budget, but we didn't use it correctly. We didn't always use it the way we should have and the accountability, because it's easy to say we should audit, but what should our strategic plan be? How can we get parents more involved in the process and how can we focus on priorities? So I will say to you that it's about planning and it's about relationship building. It's about getting students ready from the primary stages of development and continuing the process throughout their entire school life.
Thank you. So another question and Mr. Dorsey, you'll lead off answering this.
What specifically in this community has been your greatest accomplishment to name?
I am the only person standing here who bothered to call the developer of the largest private investment that will take place in this community in a generation. I am the only person here who sat in a meeting with the members of the Hill and Road Improvement Association and Senator Joan Carter Conway and the president of Morgan and the developer of Northwood Shopping Plaza. So I could be informed about what's going on here and I was the first person here to take a stand on that. I don't know, I've driven through that alley that goes behind all of your houses in original Northwood to see the swamp that takes, that takes hold there every year. I've tried to get DVW to come out there and fix that. I'll just keep plugging away on that. I've had a couple of house parties in your neighborhood. I don't know what, you're my holder.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, the same question, please?
I've done a lot of work throughout the entire city that I'm really proud of, and, and a lot of areas that really needed my help and my attention. Unfortunately, I haven't done anything, in particular, in this neighborhood. Uh, but everyone has my number. If you have any questions, or if you have any concerns in your neighborhood, feel free to give me a ring, and you have my intention to address any and all your needs. Uh, in regards to the current development, I've had conversations with the current councilperson around the development project, and what directions they look, they're looking to go in, and what direction it needs to go in. Uh, I have conversations with the Hill and Road Improvement Association on what they think of the development project, and what their needs are, and what they need from me to make sure things happen. Uh, unfortunately, this project is larger than just me, I can't make it happen on my own. In order to make things, to make sure things happen correctly, it's gonna need to happen as a coalition, bringing people together, such as the Hill and Road Improvement Association, such as the current councilman, and such as the developer, who I have been in communication and reached out to and spoke to, uh, unlike what other candidates said. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce, the same question, please?
So, as community association president, I have been able to turn something that looked so dire and change it into a thriving organization. When we're able to impact our community, we have applied and been granted our 501(c)(3), which enables us to do more in our community, something that I'm very proud to say, that I'm now leading an organization who is taking charge of its neighborhood, and not waiting for anybody else to fund us, but going after what we want. So for me, being able to help my community make strides and thrive is my greatest accomplishment in this neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Van Hook, the same question, please?
My greatest accomplishment in this neighborhood is I raised three sons. They all are now young adults, they graduated from the Baltimore City School System, they are God-fearing, they are great citizens, and I'm proud of that. Now, I also have lived in this community for twenty-eight years, and I've also served our school system at the highest level, and I followed my sons through that process. And unlike Mr. Jones, who said, "I don't have anything to say in this community", the reason why is that he's never lived in our community before. I've lived here for twenty-eight years, and I have paid taxes and made life contributions to everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Dent, the same question, please?
Honestly, I just feel like my greatest accomplishment in original Northwood is Jeff Con. Uh, network justice, giving laundry lists of things to do, uh, one of those being to participate in snack. That was a, uh, that was a challenge stepping outside myself. Uh, sisters, uh, neighbor, Art Prober, I had to learn how to act, not a very good actor. If I tell you, I tried, but it didn't go too well. Um, I worked in Northwood, it sits primarily of our baseball league. Many of the kids that lived and grew up here and played for the league, I played baseball with George's kids, grew up together. Showing his age a little bit, but at the same time, if you have a real investment in your community, you never get to a greatest accomplishment, you still have work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Good time for another?
Yeah, yes. This is, this is something that has been discussed in Congress, but I'm gonna bring it up because about half of all the, uh, questions relate to this. The city council pays a somewhat generous salary of sixty thousand dollars a year. How do you, how can you earn our trust if you, if you cannot be on that salary a full-time public servant?
Okay, um, Mr. Jones, that will lead off the question. You can repeat it.
Um, yeah, could you repeat it one more? How do you? Okay, alright, yeah, let me try this one right. Um, so, first, I, I would like to say, you're right, Mr. Van Hook, I, I don't live in original Northwood, I live in Hamilton.
No, you don't, no, you don't.
I thought you were in original Northwood. Can I, can I answer my question? Because the question was whether or not I live in, no, I don't live in original Northwood, I live in Hamilton, and I didn't know other candidates lived in original Northwood. So, that, that was my, 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 my answer to that question. But can I live off the salary of sixty thousand? Yes, yes, I can. I stayed in the question previously before this. Whether or not I could live off that salary, I absolutely, I can, it would be no problem for me to. And, uh, that I'm able to, I hope I would be able to, uh, gain your trust wherever I ask that question. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce?
So I want to thank the person from Rise Campaign who asked that question, because it is a very good question. But to answer the question, yes, I can. Yes, I can survive off of sixty thousand dollars. Just like being a public servant is about being accountable to the public needs and our money, it's about me being able to manage my money to do what I have to do, and that I can do that, I do that now, so yes.
Thank you. Mr. Van Hook, do you have a question, please?
I'm a retired person. And the sixty-five thousand dollars and more that I make, yes, I will be a full-time city councilperson, just like everything else that I've tried to do. I will give my heart, soul, and I'm not gonna say that I'm gonna wake up every morning and devote all of my time to it, because I am gonna go to church, I am gonna do some other things, but I am going to serve the people with gusto, creativity, and also honesty.
Thank you. Mr. Dent, same question?
I've served the community without pay for years, so sixty thousand dollars, or whatever the number is, isn't gonna deter or inhibit me or hinder me in any way. It's just, my service is not indicative of kind of salary received, because I've served my entire life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, the same question, please?
Yes, the same question, the same question that seems like I've already asked. I, I think I answered this question before. Uh, I don't know, I, I guess I wanna question this guy while I've got an opportunity. How is he gonna maintain a, a clear mind?
If we could just stick to answering questions separate ways, you can save that for your, your, your closing statements. Thank you. Um, so, uh, it is a bit past nine, I know we haven't asked all the questions that may be on folks' minds. Um, I would encourage you to continue, uh, the conversation with these candidates. They, uh, will share their contact information, uh, they have robust presences on the web, uh, Twitter, email, et cetera. Um, but now I'd like to give them each an opportunity for closing statements. I ask that they limit those to, uh, two minutes, um, that they be respectful, um, and we will go in reverse alphabetical order. So, Mr. Van Hook, you will begin, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, we are facing some difficult days in city government. We cannot entrust the future of our city to people who need on-the-job training. We need experience, we need versatility, we need someone who is dynamic and representing the interests of our people. And that name is George Van Hook. Thirty-five years of public service at all levels. School board member, father of three, someone who has paid taxes, who has contributed to this community for a number of years by choice. I am someone that does not need on-the-job training. You would not entrust your car to someone who had never fixed a car before. You would not go to a surgeon who has never cut a body before. You will not entrust your electrician to wire your house if he or she had never done it before. Nor should you allow anyone to serve you in city hall that has never done it before. The reality is, I'm competing against people who are very smart, they may be even smarter than me. However, they do not have the experience, or the tenacity, or the track record to show that they are worthy of the opportunity. I ran against the incumbent last time, he chose to step away. I am the best candidate, and I have the track record to show it. And last but not least, I love this neighborhood, I care about you, and I'm not a Superman, but I am the best at collaborating on this panel of candidates. I'm asking you to vote for George Van Hook, starting April the twelfth, and also, again, throughout the process, April the twenty-sixth, and I appreciate your attention, God bless.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce, closing remarks, please?
I first want to thank everyone for taking the time out of their busy schedules to come out and hear the visions of me and my colleagues. Um, I have enjoyed the spirit of the space tonight, I don't know about anybody else, but I have. Um, one thing that has resonated with me tonight is this word about experience. And so for me, you know, there's a passage in the Bible that says, "Do not look down on me because I'm young." And so for me, for anyone to look down on me because I'm young, means a whole lot, and it says a whole lot about you as a person. Because I've been working hard since the day that I stepped foot in the third district. And if your track record is built upon our school systems, where our third grade reading level is inefficient and failing, that says a lot about your experience. Our schools may be good, but why settle for a good when you can be great? Why settle for a good candidate when you can choose the best candidate who's gonna work for you? And that's what I intend to do, and so I hope that I have your vote and your support throughout this election. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, your closing remarks, please?
Yes, first, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to come out and listen to me speak today, to listen to us speak today, and, and educate yourself when these candidates make a, a form decision. Uh, one of the other things I encourage you to do is go home and do your research, and fact-check a lot of things people are talking about today. You may hear some candidates talk about, "They're the only ones to support a fifteen-dollar minimum wage." Well, actually, uh, I, I'm currently working with a coalition of people in, uh, you know, labor and community groups, and faith brings through the past legislation to put forth a fifteen-dollar minimum wage right now, is what I'm currently doing. You may also hear about, some people are talking about that they're the only ones, you know, to speak to developers. You know, when I've actually reached out to the developer, I've talked to the councilman about the development project, and I've also talked to the community association about it. Uh, in addition to that, you may hear council talk, you know, count, you, you may hear people talking about they raised more money than anyone else in this race, that they raised sixty-seven thousand dollars. Actually, that isn't true, because I've raised over seventy-one thousand dollars. And you can look at the campaign financial report. I'll say, just double-check, please, the stuff that people are saying, such as certain people's residency, and you'll find the real truth. But I'm asking you to vote for me, city council, because I'm the one candidate, as I said in my introduction, who has the experience, the day one, and track record to represent this community the way it needs to be represented. I have the experience in legislation and constituent services, which are the two skills a councilperson need more than anything. And I think that's the reason why I've been endorsed by numerous organizations, and also elected officials, because they witnessed the work I've done in this community, and, and throughout the entire city. They witnessed me put coalitions of people together, help solve some of the tough problems we have in our city. And I'll ask you, vote for me, Jermaine Jones, on election day, because I love this district, I care about this district, I grew up in this district, I have family who live here, and we need someone who on day one will make sure our district is a priority and give the representation we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsey, closing remarks, please?
I have never been a member of the Baltimore City Council before, I have never had that experience before. I'm running to be a member of the city council, because I had lived to no faith that our city would bring forth people who would say much more than we need to strengthen communities and empower residents, and, and fix a broken educational system that we've been talking about fixing and strengthening and empowering for a long time. I came forth to change the dialogue here in Baltimore City, to say, these sim, these problems of education, and public safety, and crime, and public health, and environmental issues are symptoms. These are symptoms of much deeper problems that have existed in Baltimore City for our entire history around housing, employment, and transportation. These policies, these problems are the making of allowing racism to drive policy in Baltimore City for our entire history, leaving us without affordable housing, living wage shops, and equitable transit system. I am running for city council to dismantle the racist and divisive policies that have brought us to the Baltimore City that we are today, that has been led by this, the, the current city council, and the establishment of democratic power that has said for sixty years it's acceptable for us to be an entirely democratic-run ci- city, yet not lead this nation on how to transform a post-industrial city into one that thrives while manufacturing is not coming back. Lead this nation on how to dismantle institutional racism as a way of life. I'm here because our entire system has failed us on the, the most foundational level, and we can, at, we, not only deserve better, we can actually have better. And I've lived here my entire life, and I didn't know anybody else who was gonna come from our district and put forth that kind of platform. That's why I'm running for city council, I'm Brian Dorsey.
Thank you. Mr. Dent, your closing remarks, please?
Thank you. We talk about track records, we talk about passion, we talk about commitment. One thing I want to say is, my track record is proven and documented, my commitment is proven and documented. I want to make sure all of you truly understand what is going on here in our district right now, and some of the things that we need to systematically change. We talk about education, we talk about police reform, we talk about affordable housing, we talk about development. But you have to have a councilperson that can tackle all of these specific issues. I've done so on different levels throughout my career. Being only thirty-one, I don't have fifty-six years of, of age. However, age is not equate to experience. I want to make sure that all of you also understand that I'll continue to work, and continue to fight, and continue to be present in all meetings, in all, uh, forums, to make sure that you hear my voice, and to make sure that you understand where I'm coming from. Again, I'm Marcus, and I'm running for third district city council, and I hope that I can continue to earn your ver- vote and your trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in applauding the candidates for... Answering our questions graciously, uh, I appreciate that. I know this is a very busy time, and, uh, and thank you for making, making, uh, a spot in your schedule for us. I think these were, were good questions and, and very thought-provoking answers. Um, I would encourage, uh, folks to approach the candidates, uh, after I say a few things. Um, and there are two pieces of neighborhood business. Um, the first, many of you know, and, and it was alluded to in one of the questions, that it's, there's this ongoing, uh, discussion between the various neighborhoods, the developer, Morgan State, and our elected representatives with regard to Northwood Commons. Um, that continuing dialogue has led to some smart compromises with the design of the center. And yesterday, uh, uh, or last week, we had a meeting at Morgan State where, uh, the development team unveiled those plans, uh, to us. And, um, I received, uh, uh, images of, or if, files containing those, those plans that I now have permission to share, uh, with you all, and, and so I'll be, I'll be doing that through, uh, Nextdoor. Um, uh, so I would encourage everyone, if you're not on Nextdoor, to please, uh, uh, ask one of us how to, to get on and, uh, and contribute to the ongoing dialogue. The second piece, um, and this is, is concerning to me, uh, a very, a, a great number of the board will be term limited, uh, when we have our, uh, elections in September. Um, I will not be running, uh, Dana will not be running for vice president. Um, Emily Weber, um, JP, uh, uh, will not be running. Um, uh, and so, I'll be putting all of that information on Nextdoor. Uh, the good thing is that, uh, we have a nominating committee, uh, that we are forming, we'll announce in April. And that committee will be reaching out to everyone in the neighborhood to try to, uh, broaden the composition of the board, so that we can keep the good work going, uh, that, that we've achieved so far. So, thank you for allowing me to put those two plugs in, uh, and now have at them. So thank you for allowing me to put those two plugs in. Now have at them.